Well, this one is not lighting. Okay. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Can I get a roll call, please?
Brock Pierce, believe he's running late. Marilyn Kramer.
Here.
Michael Flick. David Jackman.
Here.
Carrie Rohrmeier absent. Carl Nebry.
Here.
Dan Lazareski.
Here.
Shelley Reed.
Here.
And Alex Velto.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can I have everybody stand so we can salute the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Recording in progress.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next up is approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion, please?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And now we're going to open it for public comment. Do we have any public comment?
We have none.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to close public comment. Next up is approval of the minutes. That would be for the August 4th, 2025 Regional Planning Commission meeting. Can I get a motion?
Sure.
Commissioner Jockman, I motion approve.
Can I get a second?
Commissioner Lazareski, second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next up is approval of the minutes for the August 28th, 2025 Regional Planning Commission meeting. Can I get a motion, please?
Commissioner Lazareski, motion to approve is written.
Commissioner Jockman, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Now we go to business of the day. Mr. Director.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. So today we have business of the day. We're going to start with item 6A. It's a presentation regarding the Cold Springs Water Balance Analysis. It's going to get kicked off by Chris and then he'll introduce our guests.
Good evening, Commissioner Chris. This is your team, RPA. This item is an informational presentation regarding the Cold Springs Water Balance Analysis, and that's going to be done by...
Staff from the Western Regional Water Commission and Washoe County. Thank you. We initially envisioned this item being the lead-in to the Stonegate objection, which we are anticipating this item being considered tonight. That's why we're at this facility. But the city of Reno decided to not object to the RPC's determination, but this is still an appropriate and important item for us to consider as the Regional Planning Commission. And we're also going to be scheduling essentially the same item for the Regional Planning Governing Board at their October 9th meeting. In addition to the discussion tonight, we're going to bring forward the information that we gather from the Cold Springs Water Balance Analysis to put in the public infrastructure plan. And you guys will be seeing that come forth with that change, as well as the updates to the spending and CIP data in the November timeframe. So with that, I will pass it off to Kim Rigdon from the Western Regional Water Commission and Duane Smith from Washoe County.
Thank you for the introduction, Chris, and Director Smith for having us here tonight and inviting us to come and present to the board. Members of the commission, my name is Kim Rigdon, and I am the Western Regional Water Commission Program Manager. And with me today is Duane Smith, Director Smith, who is the Utilities and Capital Projects Director for the Community Services Department with Washoe County. I got to find my own clicker. I'm in my own house and I'm not used to being on this side of the aisle, so. If I can make it work. All right. So I thought I'd give a brief overview of who the Western Regional Water Commission is and what it is that our mandate is to do here. So the Western Regional Water Commission, you'll see on the screen, has some familiar faces. The members, the elected officials that are appointed to that board are consistent members from the city of Reno, the city of Sparks, Washoe County, Trekkie Meadows Water Authority, Trekkie Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, and the Sun Valley General Improvement District. And this elected board was created by the Nevada State Legislature. Am I too close to the mic? I can hear myself really well. It was established through the Nevada Legislature in 2007. And their primary mandate was to create water resource policy across the planning area and to really facilitate regional coordination and collaboration when it comes to water resource planning in the planning area. The Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission, I always compare this similar to the WRWC being like the Regional Planning Governing Board and the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission being similar to the Regional Planning Commission. The Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission is the technical advisory group to the Western Regional Water Commission. And as you can see, the member agencies are the same with the inclusion of a domestic well owner representative, a public at large representative, the Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe. And then all of the members have to have minimum technical expertise experience to serve on the board. So if it's a member of the public at large, they have to have specific scientific and technical experience to serve on this board. So this group is really our advisors who help to facilitate recommendations to the Western Regional Water Commission on technical projects that we're working on. Their primary mandate is to develop, implement, and update the regional water management plan. It's a comprehensive regional water management plan that dates back to the 1990s, but since this board was established in 2007, we're working on our fourth addition, our fourth update to that plan. I'm getting clicker. Okay, there we go. So here's a really beautiful picture of our comprehensive regional water management plan courtesy of Trekkie Meadows Regional Planning Agency staff, who have a shared work program with us, Cho Suizas, one of our creators of both of our website and some of the photos and graphics that we use in our planning effort. And we really appreciate our partnership with the Trekkie Meadows Regional Planning Agency staff. They help us out with a lot because the WRWC staff is a staff of three. There's me, a water management planner, and a senior office specialist to implement the programs that we oversee. So the regional water management plan is legislatively also driven through the WRWC Act that created the WRWC and the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission. And it outlines very specific topics that that plan needs to address and where the agencies regionally coordinate on those specific topics. So we've created policy and chapters in the plan that address water supply, wastewater and effluent management, flood control and stormwater conveyance, water quality. Regional coordination and facilitation is a huge one. That's a big part of our plan. It's the whole purpose of our organization coming together, is to really look at where we can coordinate. Water knows no jurisdictional boundaries, and so we definitely need to coordinate all of these different topics. And as a component of that, regional infrastructure planning is not necessarily called out in the WRWC Act, but we needed to identify a facility of a certain size and type that would trigger our regional collaboration coordination. So rather than focusing on every single pipe that goes into the ground, we really focus on major facilities planning. And with that, recently, the Cold Springs, why are we here? We're here to talk about the Cold Springs Water Balance Analysis. And so this became a priority in the comprehensive regional water management plan in 2021. There were members of the Water Planning Commission that were looking at wastewater and effluent management in the North Valleys. They're looking at water supply in the North Valleys. And the uniqueness of that closed basin up there required a little bit more analysis for us to understand what that's going to look like moving forward and how we can develop some tools so that we have those tools available to us for facilities planning.
Kim, can I interrupt you for a moment?
Yes.
Can we note the record that Commissioner Pierce is now here? Thank you.
Thank you. So in 2022, every year, the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission holds a priority setting, and we have our annual budget, and the Water Planning Commission members get together. They talk about the different issues that are going on with those various subject matter that are in the plan, and they decide what priorities or projects need to occur to solve some of the issues or to take care of some of the planning or develop tools to help with planning and those sorts of things. So they prioritize the Cold Springs Water Balance in October of 2022. The WRWC approved funding for the project in their fiscal year 2024 budget. And the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission felt Washoe County was the best agency in the group to lead that effort due to the fact that they run the Cold Springs Water Reclamation Facility and have interest there with the water suppliers. And Washoe County has selected StanTech as a professional services provider to develop the model and do the analysis. And with that, I'm going to turn the time over to Director Smith to really go into the study and what the study is intended to do and how the study will be used in the future.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Kim. And please, as I go through this, just hope that you hear a couple of things. Kim talked just a second ago about regional collaboration and how the area is working collaboratively to find the best data-driven decisions in that process to make good recommendations, to make good decisions on infrastructure, and to be responsible and respectful for the planning efforts that need to occur within these areas and certainly within the Cold Springs area. So I'm going to kind of focus on that a little bit. Give me just a second here. Oh, no, no, no. I might have a crutch, but I'm not helpless. And I'm down to one crutch today, so that's good. So in all areas of the county, we have unique challenges when considering new development and the interface with existing development. So part of our responsibility is to develop better tools, better ways to understand and navigate the challenges of new development as that new development interfaces with the existing developments. So as Kim said, with support of the Western Regional Water Commission, they provided funding to help us regionally and collaboratively work on a comprehensive groundwater, surface water model, to help us understand the best that we can, that complicated relationship between the way that groundwater and surface water interacts within a closed basin. So I think I've probably said it before in other meetings, and certainly you've probably heard it as well. We are the basin and range state. Cold Springs is a closed hydro basin, the same as Lemon Valley and the same as other areas within our county. And so this creates a unique set of challenges when you consider that all the water that enters into the Cold Springs Basin comes in as precipitation. At the same time, all the water that leaves the basin leaves through evaporation. So that's really the hallmark of a closed basin. There's no outlet to an ocean, no outlet to a river. There's no rivers that bring water in into the basin. So it's really important when we consider closed basins, how the water balance works, how the balance between use, how the balance between things like recharge occurs. And this is something that is very important when we start looking at new development as well. We have existing development in areas, but how does that existing development, how does that continue to operate successfully with the addition of new development in areas? Well, certainly, existing and new development relies on drinking water. So in the Cold Springs Hydro Basin, all of the drinking water demands are met with groundwater. There are some other surface water resources, but currently, Great Basin Water is the single water purveyor that provides potable drinking water, as well as a lot of the residents utilize domestic wells, you know, their own private water systems to produce that water. Of course, with the production of water and the use of water, then you've got to do something with that water. And so in the Cold Springs Hydro Basin, Washoe County is the sole water reclamation owner. So we own the Cold Springs Water Reclamation Facility. That facility is a 700,000 gallon per day permitted facility. We're flowing at about 400,000 gallons a day currently. Of course, there's also septic systems. So private domestic well owners, also many of them have septic systems to treat their wastewater. And don't forget about stormwater. So we talk about the water balance. We talk about water coming into the basin. Certainly, when we see precipitation events, you know, that's bringing the water in. Sometimes it brings it in a little too fast, and then we have to deal with that water as in terms of floodwater. But we also rely on that water, that stormwater, to infiltrate and provide that water resource. So as Kim mentioned, and again, very appreciative of the Western Regional Water Commission funding this effort, I want to just go over briefly with you what the scope of the effort is in a little bit more detail and what the current status is. Well, you can't build a comprehensive basin-wide ground and surface water model without pulling together all the existing available information, right? So looking at all the different data sets, precipitation data sets, well pumping data sets, all of the available information was brought together to help us in the creation of this water model. We also utilized... We also utilized other people's efforts, and for instance, there has been work done by other developers to look at more specific and focused areas in the basin. So we also utilize that information, incorporate that into our effort as well. Of course, you can't build a model without all the data. You've got to bring all that information into the model. You have to calibrate that. You have to run that model to understand, is it accurately identifying what those inputs are based on what the outputs are? So that's another reason we take in all these data sets. We incorporate all that information in the model, and we start running that model to understand if the model is correct or not. And then we modify or adjust or calibrate that model as we go. And we're certainly using things like Whiteslake elevations. We're using things like the volume of water that Washoe County puts into its rapid infiltration basins at the wastewater reclamation facility and understand what the groundwater elevations look like as a result of that. So there's a lot of, I want to impress upon you about the amount of effort that goes into these things. So those tasks are already generally done. Now where we're at is to develop real-world scenarios and use that ground and surface water model and push it, right? We want to understand if we've got existing development here and proposed development here, what does that mean? And of course, as we talked about a second ago, we've got a lot of different inputs. We've got water demands. We've got wastewater demands. And we've got all of the interaction between evaporation and evapotranspiration, leaving the basin, and then we've got how that affects the groundwater tables. So we have to build these models to say, okay, if this development goes over here and it does this, how is that going to affect, for instance, Whiteslake? So if we have a large development over here and we have another large development over here and Whiteslake is in the middle, what does that runoff look like when there's storm events? How does that affect the groundwater table? How does that affect the water surface elevation of Whiteslake? When those developments are pulling more water under the ground, how is that affecting the subsurface water table? How is that affecting the resiliency and the sustainability of that water table? It would be inappropriate to go through all the effort of understanding that complicated relationship between ground and surface water if you didn't also look at water quality. Surface water quality is impacted by runoff from roadways. Irrigated lands utilize fertilizers, those types of things. And certainly, when we start talking about other things like septic systems or the discharge from even though it's highly treated wastewater, how potentially would that have an effect on groundwater resources within the basin? So water quality is also a part of this effort. So you go through the development. You go through the calibration. You start plugging in scenarios. Those scenarios are looking at new development. They're looking at changes in weather patterns. They're looking at different stresses within the basin. We're looking at the water quality. We're taking all that information. Why? To develop the best data-driven decisions regarding infrastructure, regarding mitigation for those potential impacts. So when we start thinking about new development, what role might new development have in addressing some of those challenges or concerns that come through identifying some of these potential issues? So it's complicated, but it's doable. I just wanted to go over some of the factors in a little bit more detail with you. So we talked a little bit about new development. We also talked a little bit about how new development changes surface water patterns. So I wanted to just specifically talk about plants, turf, existing undisturbed areas versus now disturbed areas that have been revegetated. We know that different types of plants have different evapotranspiration rates. What is evapotranspiration? Remember, I mentioned that the only way water comes into the basin is through precipitation. The only way it leaves the basin is through evaporation. So you have evaporation from standing water, and you have evapotranspiration from living plants, trees, sod, those types of things. But new development comes in, and we have requirements. We say, well, you have to put sod in this area. You have to plant trees in this area. You have to do these things in this area. These can make differences in the rate at which water goes into the ground and the amount of water demand to irrigate those things can affect how much water comes out of the ground. I mentioned Whiteslake before. That is obviously a big consideration for us. We need to understand what that relationship is between existing and new development and potentially changes to Whiteslake and its water surface area. As I mentioned, we've got changes in groundwater pumping, so the more development that occurs, couple that with the existing development, well, we need to absolutely understand what the rate of change in the groundwater table, what that resource looks like. Same thing for wastewater treatment. As the utility purveyor in the area, I need to understand when we might need to expand our wastewater treatment facility. So when there's new development or existing development is utilizing more water, they're sending more water to our wastewater facility. I mentioned a minute ago that our facility is currently permitted at 700,000 gallons per day, .7 MGD, and we're flowing at about 400,000 gallons a day, .4 MGD. There's a lot of capacity still left within that facility, but we have to be responsible to understand when we need to initiate things like expansions to our facility, when we need to look for ways to manage our effluent in different ways than what we do today. These can sound challenging, and certainly they are, but they also represent opportunity. And when I think about what we've done in areas such as the South Trekkie Meadows at one of our reclamation facilities there, we've really turned kind of lemons into lemonade by giving us the ability to maximize the use of recycled water from our South Trekkie Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. So this is, and the South Trekkie Meadows takes in all the flows from the South Trekkie Meadows, it's running at about 4.2 MGD, so about 4.2 million gallons a day. All of that water goes out for beneficial, higher and better purposes than just letting it evaporate or other things. So we're using that water to irrigate. We're using that water for construction. As we continue to advance and grow, we look for opportunities to use that water with things like industry. That's the same situation that we really have here in the Cold, that's the same opportunity. Let me use the word opportunity. That's the same opportunity that we have here in the Cold Springs area. So you would expect, and part of my responsibility is to make sure that as we move through new development, as we respond to new development, that we're also looking for opportunities with that development to build new resources. Recycled water, highly-treated recycled water is one of those resources. So just in summary, our next steps, of course, I've mentioned the model, running those scenarios, continuing to push that model and refine that model. This allows us to make, not that we don't make good decisions today. I want to assure you that we do make good decisions, but through these efforts, we can make better decisions. And sometimes those decisions might be the same decision, but maybe we make it at a different time. So it's not just the decision, but it's the timing of when those decisions are made. These types of efforts are really regional. This is not Washoe County. This is Washoe County City Arena, the Trekkie Meadows Water Authority. This is, of course, WRWC and all of you, everybody together, because we all benefit from the outcome of these types of efforts. But we're not done. Once we're very comfortable with the Cold Springs model, we're going to take these lessons learned, and we're going to develop this same approach in other closed basin areas like Lemon Valley. So this is, I consider it more of a stepping stone than a final product. So I just wanted to take a few minutes tonight and share with you some of the important things that staff around the region are working on together. These things directly impact, these efforts directly relate to how new development and existing development interface. These efforts create opportunities as well when we start thinking about recycled water and other opportunities that will come out of these types of efforts. So I just wanted to take a few minutes of your time tonight. Thank you very much. And Kim and I are certainly here and available for questions.
I have a question. I just, I know I came in late, but does the Cold Springs Valley go into the Red Rock Valley water-wise at any point?
Let me see, Commissioner Pierce, if I can go back to one of those earlier pictures. I'm hoping your screen is a little bit better than this one. But on the right side, you can see Whiteslake in the middle there, and you can see that blue outline. That is the Cold Springs Closed Hydro Basin boundary, that blue line. So no, water that, if a drop of water, if a precipitation falls outside that line, that water goes somewhere else. If it falls inside that line, it goes into the Cold Springs Hydro Basin. So that's in essence what a closed basin is. The only way for water to enter is through precipitation or through some other means, maybe some type of regional importation project, which does not exist here. The only way for water to leave the basin is through evaporation. Or some type of regional exportation project, which does not exist here. So that really defines that area. So water coming into the basin stays in the basin, is used in the basin, and then leaves the basin.
Right. So that's a mountain range about where the blue line is, so the mountain range would divide it. I'd say there's something going down really deep, and that's what defines the Cold Springs Valley from the Red Rock Valley?
Yes.
So, okay. All right. Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions?
Duane, great presentation. Good to see you again. What's better? You talked about evaporation and evapotransportation and plants and landscape and ground cover and all of that. Is that better for water to stay in the basin, or is it about even?
Commissioner, I think I would answer it to say that I don't know if I could say one is better than the other. I think the reason I brought that up and I wanted to point that out to you is that that's kind of the level of detail, that we're going into this very complicated ground and surface water model. Because when you look at an undeveloped area, let's say it's just sagebrush, you know, the standard freeadified that exists down here. When that now is developed, and maybe there's areas of sod, and maybe there's areas of other types of landscaping, they consume water at a different rate, and they release water at a different rate. And that can be meaningful when we really look at an overall water balance. We've really tried to get as granular as we can with this effort so that we can understand. Now, I'm not going to say that one is better than the other, but I want you to be confident that we're accounting for those things in the model. So we can actually, if a new development is coming in to an area, and again, this isn't just for Cold, this is where our focus is now, is Cold Springs, but it's not our, we're not done. But with these higher levels of understanding, maybe that could lead to some other decisions or direction for landscaping or for new development. But right now, we need to understand what that relationship is.
So you want it to be complementary to one another?
We certainly would. I think that would be everybody's angle.
Okay.
Yeah.
Next, the other question that I have is what's the threshold for expansion of the wastewater treatment plant? So where's the line drawn? You said you're pulling in 400,000...
You said you're pulling in 400,000 gallons per day, and its capacity is 700,000. So where's the cutoff point, so to speak, as to where all of a sudden you'd say, okay, we need to start looking at this when development gets to this point? Where is that point?
It's a great question, and I'm glad you brought that up, because I think there's always been a concern that there, and not just in the Lemon Valley area, but in other areas, that there may not be enough capacity in a wastewater reclamation facility for a particular development. There are rules and regulations. NAC specifically requires municipal wastewater purveyors to initiate planning processes when we hit a certain threshold of flow coming in to the treatment plant. That in and of itself is not the end-all, because it's complicated. It's not just flow, but it's also loading. So some facilities, depending upon how they manage their effluent, have different requirements. And so there is a very rigorous process that we all engage in, facility planning for expansion. So I will, let me give you two quick examples. In the South Trachimettos, we started our current expansion project planning about 10 years ago. That was getting basically all the ideas, the concepts, in alignment with what the need was as we anticipated and planned for new development, working with our regional partners, understanding what the rate and pace of development, where it would occur. Again, we respond to new development, we don't lead development, we respond to development. So we want to make sure that as development does come in, we're in a situation where we can receive those flows. So we started that planning work about 10 years ago. We didn't actually go to construction until about five years ago, so there's a lot of work and effort that goes into that. Same thing in the Cold Springs area. So we have a current facility, we have capacity for new development. There are challenges with effluent management. Our effluent management is a restriction in that area. So part of what we're doing now is we've gone through facility, we go through kind of continuous facility planning work, but we've also budgeted in the FY '26 a full deep dive into facility planning. And what I mean by facility planning, Commissioner, is that we're looking at the pace of development, because the pace of development dictates how quickly the flows are coming into the plant. We're using tools like this to understand where we can find opportunities for effluent management, for the use of highly treated, high-quality recycled water in other areas. Then we'll use these types of tools, along with other tools that we have, to make decisions about when we initiate design for that expansion, what that will look like. Will it be existing treatment processes? Will it be different treatment processes? What will we do with that recycled water, et cetera? These are complicated, but they're doable. We're pretty successful at doing this. But it does take time, it takes effort. So I want to make sure that if I'm answering your question, I want you to have confidence that yes, there is existing capacity within our Lemon Valley, within our Cold Springs facility. Just like every facility, there should be an expectation that we stay in front of new development by doing the appropriate planning efforts so that when development does come in, we have capacity. And not just that we have treatment capacity, but we've made very good environmental permitting and cost decisions associated with what we're doing with that facility as we expand it.
That was a wonderful explanation, Dwayne.
Sometimes I get a little wordy.
No, no, that was great. I understood everything that you said, which is amazing. Kim, I have a question for you. Just out of curiosity, where did your budget come from?
Thank you for the question. Kim Ridgen, for the record, our budget comes from a 1.5% surcharge fee to the public water systems in the area.
Okay.
So we collect funding from Tamoa and five other Great Basin, Silver Knowles Mutual Water Company, and a few others.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's all I have.
Commissioner Flick, at the end of the contract, I guess I'm trying to figure out what the end product is going to be that we can use. I'd like to think that we can decide this type of development puts a real strain, not now, but in the future, on the overall operation of the county and the people that are here and the people that are going to be here. And then in the future, there's always going to be some kind of development going on that we have to worry, that there's always water and good quality water. So are we going to be able to analyze projects that come before us, and we have no idea what's going to come before us, that's compliant with the current zoning, with whatever municipality has on their books as far as what a zone is, and decide, well, geez, maybe we shouldn't have all this residential here, maybe we should have more commercial or more industrial or what have you. I think we can pretty well, I guess the easiest way would be when you have housing, you can pretty well calculate how much that is going to use, how much water is going to be needed for that. But when you start getting into these other areas, we don't know. It could be a high-use water consumption on one type of use and on another, you know, maybe not so much. Are we going to be able to distinguish which is best, or am I getting too deep in the weeds here?
Thank you for the question, Kim Ridgen, for the record. That is very granular for what our mission is and the projects that we're working on. For the Western Regional Water Commission, really the goal is to ensure that we have sustainable water resources to serve the community now and into the future. So we don't get into looking at what land use development and projects look like outside of how do we serve those projects. I don't know that there, it's not really our mission to take a look at that. We understand the concerns with that, and our primary goal is to allow Tamoa to make sure that as a partner, they're predicting the amount of water demand that's going to happen, that's going to be necessary into the future. And that Director Smith and the other directors with the cities and the county are looking at the wastewater and making sure that they can facilitate and accommodate wastewater moving into the future, stormwaters and other pieces. We like to look at it from a one-water perspective. All water is being recycled, being reused, we need water supply, we need quality water, we have stormwater that impacts us. So most of our focus is on how do we manage those water resources into the future and make it a sustainable supply and resource.
If I may, is there any thought going into having the wastewater cleaned to a tertiary level?
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that question. In the South Trachimettos, as we initiated the planning and ultimately the construction that expanded our facility there by 2 million gallons per day, we changed the process to allow for more advanced treatment, if that is the direction that we're going in the future. Tertiary treatment is what we're doing, but I think really what we're interested in is from a water resource management standpoint, what does the next 20 years look like? What does the next 40 years look like? What does the next 60 years look like? So we want to understand as technology evolves, how do we align our facilities, our expansions, with what that technology and where that's going? And I think that's very well demonstrated right now in the North Valleys, the collaboration between the City of Reno and the Trachimettos Water Authority on their advanced water treatment facility. So they've recognized that as both a need and as an opportunity to take wastewater, treat it to a drinking water standard, and to put that into the ground as a resource. So these are things that we as responsible utility managers are incorporating into not just our existing expansions, like I mentioned in our South Trachimettos plant, and certainly what the City of Reno and Tamoa are doing, but those will be certainly part of the discussions and the decisions as we step into whatever that expansion looks like in Cold Springs as we move into the future. That is absolutely correct.
Particularly in a closed area, closed basin?
Particularly when you consider the additional challenges of a closed hydro.
Can't manufacture, so we have to clean it up more. Just don't tell me it's coming to my house. But, just kidding. Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Jockerman, so you mentioned that this is a closed basin. In my review of a recent application within this basin, one of the things I noticed was that there are homes to the north of White Lake that reside within a floodplain. So can you kind of walk me through, in the event that we have one of those 100-year events for stormwater, what happens to those homes in that event when that flood occurs? What does that flood look like?
Maybe the best way, Commissioner, that I can answer that question is that all new development goes through a rigorous conditioning process. And if there are homes that are proposed to be built within a FEMA-designated floodplain, 100-year floodplain, those homes have to meet certain criteria for development. Those criteria may be elevation, and I will tell you that in Washoe County, that is certainly one of the criterias for new development within a FEMA-designated high-risk floodzone. So elevation is key. So FEMA requires that homes be elevated above the BFE, the base flood elevation. Washoe County, under our program, we require a foot above that. And the reason for that is we're also part of what's referred to, we also have participated in another FEMA program that provides for, while it requires more rigorous development standards, like additional elevation and those types of things, it does provide a benefit through reduced flood insurance policies. So when you ask specifically about a development on the north side of White Lake that's within the FEMA floodplain, I'm very confident that if that went through Washoe County engineering, that the FEMA requirements for that development, that the FEMA requirements were applied for that development like any other development, that addressed those potential issues. Now, remember that the 100-year floodplain is just that. It's not the 200-year floodplain, it's not the 500-year floodplain. And so we know that flooding can and does occur in many areas, even areas that are outside of FEMA-designated high-risk areas or 100-year floodplains, flooding can and will occur. So part of what we're also doing is applying design and development requirements through the Trachimettos Regional Drainage Manual, which is something that both the cities, both of the cities and the county have incorporated into our development codes. We apply those standards as well. These are things that are done to help mitigate and reduce the impacts for new development. I think this is, we're pretty successful with that. But again, flooding does occur, will occur, and can occur in any area.
So I guess maybe the simpler way of getting at, asking that question, was we've obviously had a flood in North Valleys where those homes were waterlogged for many years. And it sounds like in that basin, we could have the same sort of an event, given the type of watershed that it is. Is that fair to say that that could happen at some point in the future?
If you're referring to the 2017 flood events in the Lemon Valley area, specifically around Swan Lake, yes, that flood actually, I'm assuming that's what you're referring to?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, perfect. That actually wasn't a 100-year flood event, just want to put that on the record. The homes that were impacted initially, the few homes that actually had water in the living spaces, that was short-term, it was horrible, it was nothing that any community we want to see, we don't want to see that happening anywhere, anywhere. But Washoe County took the lead, we built berms, dikes, barriers, pumps, and we got the water out of the neighborhoods, got the water off the streets, and that was done within a couple of months, so that was in March of 2017. Since then, we've maintained those barrier systems in and around the Swan Lake area for the benefit of the residents. Cold Springs is another closed basin. Whiteslake was something that we've had a very close eye on and we're very concerned about always as we move into the winter. More atmospheric river events could lead to those types of issues. So we have to be prepared to respond, working with our regional partners, working with the Emergency Operations Center and Washoe County's Emergency Manager, to address whatever those things may come up. So we do have plans in place, we want to make sure that those things are understood, that they can occur, and we also want everybody to have confidence that we'll address those things. New development in those areas is an additional factor for what that response or what that mitigation might look like under a closed basin flood event. But those certainly would be incorporated into our response plans.
One final question, if I may. So obviously, our job, our frequent job as planning commissioners is to review new development applications as they come through. That's our chief role. So tying those events that have occurred in North Valleys, how should we look at applications that come through in these watersheds? We're obviously talking about White Lake, with regard to those potential flooding risks. You know, we can choose if the project goes forward or not, make a recommendation, I should say, in many cases. How should we look at those new development applications with the context of the, you know, retention requirements that have been outlined to us previously and the potential impacts for those flooding events that could occur?
Carefully. And I told you the last time as well, and I appreciate, Commissioner, that you brought that up, because we did learn things from the 2017 flood events in the Lemon Valleys, the Swan Lake area. And the outcome of that was some of those things, like the additional volumetric mitigation requirements for both detention and detention to address stormwater, but also to address the additional volumetric mitigation requirements for development within FEMA floodplains. So those are good examples where we're applying not just the requirements and development rules, but also lessons learned and incorporating those into best-practice mitigation requirements that we place on new development. I'm sure that as we move through time, we're going to find new ways to even further protect and mitigate. I think those are even some of the things that I would expect to come out of some of this effort that we're doing with this rigorous model for the surface and groundwater balance.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lazarewski, the numerical model being produced, is that going to be a live model at the end? The county or the regional water planning, do we get a copy of that model to test scenarios that maybe aren't considered under the reporting scenarios in the current effort, but in a future case?
The model is being developed, so we hired Stan Tech, Dr. Claire Archer, who is the project lead on developing the model. And that model will be turned over to the agencies so that we can utilize that model and, yes, test it, stress it, different scenarios, et cetera, yes.
Okay, so in the current effort, there's going to be a certain number of scenarios considered to reflect current planning needs, but we'll have that model going forward to fine-tune if we find out different things about groundwater, surface water linkage, or if the conditions change and we want to be able to evaluate other scenarios, we don't have to go back and rebuild it or only go to Stan Tech because they own it.
No, my full intent, first of all, we have six scenarios that are part of the current scope. No, my full intent is that this is a tool that we will continue to use moving forward. And as I mentioned, Commissioner, I'm not done, I want to go to Lemon Valley, that's my next stop.
Are we assuming a no-flow boundary in the groundwater between Lemon and Cold Springs?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite.
Are you assuming a no-flow boundary in this model? Is it a zero-flow boundary in the groundwater between Cold Springs and Lemon Valley right now, or do you guys think that there's any regional groundwater flow below the surface between those basins?
There's no infrastructure constructed between the Lemon Valley, there's two basins within Lemon Valley and Cold Springs.
No, not infrastructure.
I'm not the expert, but I don't believe by definition that there's any connection between the two. between the two.
It would be in the model assumptions and the, in the flow, what the boundary conditions are. All right. One other kind of left-turn question. This model gives regional and municipal planning better tools to understand what's actually going on, the conditions on the ground, any potential changes going forward, how we might want to react. It doesn't do anything to create water rights or give us the authority to remove the use of water rights that already exist for individuals, or businesses, or water service agencies in the area.
Absolutely not.
So just want to make clear that the outcome of this is not, we'll have better knowledge of what's going on with the water flow in the area, but it, it doesn't give us, if we, if we had the report in our hands today, it wouldn't give us, okay, well, we can take away the water rights of someone who wants to develop. Those rights exist under law, and there's a judicial process for dealing with those. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Does anybody online have any questions?
Commissioner Reed, I have one question. How does, how is this model tied to the model that the, that's being used by the Trekkie River Flood Management? They have, I think, a 2D model. Is this tying into that at all?
No, Commissioner, this, this model is specifically built just for the Cold Springs closed hydro basin, to really understand that while we understand a lot of the relationships between the ground and surface water, this model is, is a very granular model to understand those, those relationships, but it is solely and specifically just for the Cold Springs closed basin.
Thank you. That's, I, that's what I understood. I just wanted to be sure.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other board member online have any questions? Okay, I, I have one last question, Duane. Do we have a model already made for the Red Rock Valley? Is there any anticipation of maybe possibly making a model for the Red Rock Valley with all the homes that are approved out there?
We, we don't have this level, Commissioner, of, of model. Now, there is certainly modeling work that is done. If at some point in the future, that's the, the direction, and that's the, the direction that we receive from, from folks like Kim, to, to, to take these lessons learned, this type of effort, and apply it in that area, we would incorporate whatever modeling efforts are being done, those discrete modeling efforts. But there is, I'm not aware of any, this type of model for that area.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comment?
We have none.
Okay. Does anybody on the board have any discussion on the matter?
Yeah, I'll open it for a motion.
Move to accept.
Oh, yeah, move to accept. All right, I move to accept the report and presentation regarding Cold Springs Water Balance Analysis.
Commissioner.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to 6B, Public Carrier and Regional Plan Amendment Annual Review and Update of the Regional Plan, RPA 25003.
Mr. Chair, thank you. This is Jeremy Smith with the record. We have regional planner Shawnee Sousa going to take us through the, the updates for our annual housekeeping item for the regional plan.
All right. Hi, everyone. Shawnee Sousa, TMRPA for the record. I'm going to be taking you through the sponsorship and regional plan amendment for our annual report plan update, case RPA 25-003. All right, so I think most of you are here or you're familiar with, we had our bigger update last year on December 12th, 2024. And every five years, we do kind of that more comprehensive whole update to our regional plan, but every year subsequent to that, we do more like housekeeping updates. So we have annual corrections, clarifications. If there are bigger updates, we do bring them forward, but every five years is when we have that kind of bigger adoption. So this year, you're looking at mostly just housekeeping. And for our recommendation, we do recommend the amendment support the implementation of the goals and policies of our regional plan. So this is actually your attachment. It's a little tough to see on there, but I'll go through it. The first one is our most substantive update. This was for policy NR4, Natural Resource Consideration Areas. We gathered information regarding endangered species and threatened species to more accurately represent these data layers, and added the new source to the policy language as well. So this really helped us to make sure that those endangered and species, and threatened species layers were accurate. That way, when we're using the tool or other planners are using that tool, we can see what's on the land as cases come before us. And so that's going to just help, you know, with conformance reviews, making sure we know what's on the ground. So that was a really important piece that we wanted to get accurate. The next one is for policy NR11, and that is in regards to the Nat, or the Trekkie Meadows Regional Trails Plan. And so we are now housing the Trails Plan at TMRPA. So we moved that link over from the Trekkie, from the Parks Foundation, from the Parks Foundation, over to us. So it's the link to the plan, more of the information, the working group information, that can all be now found at tmrpa.org. So we just corrected that reference. Then for RC2, we just corrected a map reference. And then finally, we just have general mapping updates and maintenance. So cleaning up things like the legend, if there's extra lines, we go through and take note and check those out. Next, we have our NR Plan Updates. So in addition to the amendments to the regional plan itself, the Natural Resources Plan, which was adopted as part of the regional plan in 2024, also contains those minor amendments. For Chapter 6, Outdoor Recreation, that language was also referencing the Trekkie Meadows Parks Foundation, so updating it again to TMRPA, the Trails Coalition, the Working Group, as well as referencing them to our website instead. Next, we updated the Energy section of Chapter 5, Sustainability and Resiliency Key Takeaways. Basically, we had a whole paragraph that was not right, so it was a typo paragraph. So we replaced that, and now has the correct language. You know, noticed it a little late, but we're good. Then in Chapter 5, we also added, which is cool, the Heat Mapping Project led by State Climate Office at UNR. And we added language about the recent legislation regarding heat mitigation measures, and that is going to be effective in 2026, so we're actually ahead of the game in adding that piece. Then finally, we added more information about the NRCA data collection process for those endangered and species, and threatened species, like I just mentioned. And with all of this, we actually had help from our interns this year. We have some really great interns. They worked on the trails, they also worked on the NRCA research, getting that mapped for us, so we really appreciated that this year. Then next is a final note. We will be bringing the Public Infrastructure Document and Dashboard to your November meeting with our annual report work, so just stay tuned for that. The reason for that is that basically, the 2025 legislative session, there was a change to the regional planning statutes for annual reporting. This modifies submittals from April to October, and also modified it from the calendar to fiscal year. So we're going to be bringing it kind of later timeframe than we usually do in October, So for our review criteria, policy RC10 identifies the seven criteria that RPC and RPGB must consider when evaluating a regional plan amendment. The amendment is not anticipated to impact any of the criteria that's listed in this policy, but rather, it provides better clarity and accuracy, and will benefit the health and welfare of the community. The motion is overhead or on page 33 of your packet, and we're available for any questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Any board member online have any questions? No? Okay, do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
All right. Bring it back to the board, any discussion? No? Somebody want to make it? I'll make it. I move to sponsor the amendment request and adopt RPC Resolution 2503 regarding minor policy and mapping amendments to the 2024 Trekkie Meadows Regional Plan based upon the findings listed in the staff report. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Jacom, I'll second that motion.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passed.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to seven reports.
Mr. Chair, this is Jeremy Smith with the record. I have a brief report I can gift you, yes, if you'll bear with me. Okay, just kind of wanted to update this body on our work towards aligning approval processes and guidelines for new schools. That's been a longstanding thing. We explored the project of regional significance mechanism, we've worked closely with the school district, and most recently, we've been making progress towards a memorandum of understanding with the state public charter school authority. And so we're independently developing a relationship with this state entity that now manages the charter school approvals. They are under no obligation per state law, they're not an affected entity like, say, the school district is actually. So it's really a great step in the right direction, where we are developing this independent relationship, and we're going to be talking like twice a year and sharing information. So that, we anticipate, will bring to the governing board at their October 9th meeting. Furthermore, we have started the process with local jurisdiction staff, at least, looking at a draft of, of a new policy for school requirements in the regional plan. We have a current policy, I think it's Public Facility Policy 8, that has been in there for a while, has some specifications around locating, speed control mechanisms for schools on arterials, this sort of a thing. We're going to try to enhance that to capture some of the key components of the discussions we've had around the school approval process that do consider traffic, consider colocation, consider safety, and consider a public hearing process for schools. So that work is happening, and we'll keep you posted on that. So we are actually making progress on the school front. It's exciting. I wanted to announce that on October 23rd, I will be participating on a panel around high-energy users and data centers in Nevada at the APA, the Annual Conference of the Nevada State Association, or American Planning Association. So that's down in Minden. Further, October 23rd is our regularly scheduled RPC meeting date, but we're probably looking to, to probably cancel October's meeting. We don't necessarily have any time sensitive items that are going to be ready to go, and we have some conflicts in terms of folks being out of the country and their participation during the meeting. So we want to kind of, we'll, I'll have more information for that on you, because to some degree, we're going to need to deal with the Stonegate item. So as you know, down on August 4th, you guys voted nonconformance on Stonegate. Typically, with an MPA, that would, at the, if, if the applicant, in this case, the City of Reno, had, had wanted to bring that, to object to that decision, they could have brought that back to this body for a reconsideration. In fact, they voted at their meeting on September 10th to forego that, not because they don't support the Master Plan Amendment, the, the City of Reno still does support the Master Plan Amendment. However, the Stonegate Land Development Company folks had already filed an appeal of the decision, and in the interest of process efficiency, the discussion led to, well, we won't object, and we'll just let this go to the governing board. And so we would have potentially been hearing a reconsideration tonight, and that's one of the reasons we brought to you this Cold Springs Water Balance Presentation. A truncated version of that presentation, we will bring to, to the Regional Planning Governing Board in advance of the hearing, the appeal on October 9th, so that they can also benefit from that information and use it to gauge their decision-making on the appeal. So following that, depend, dependent on the action on the appeal, there is potential that we will need to hear then, bring back a Stonegate item for the project of regional significance component, which we did not vote on, or you guys did not vote on, during August 4th, because if the Master Plan Amendment is not approved, the project of regional significance by default cannot also be approved, but there are different voting requirements for those. And so we've held off on, on doing that, but if the appeal, if the appeals result is the governing board were to overturn your decision, for example, and kind of say that it isn't conformance, then we would need to bring that PRS back here to this body for that next step. And so we anticipate probably looking at November 17th, which is our regularly scheduled RPC meeting in November. We move it forward in the month a bit because of Thanksgiving. And so that's been on the schedule, and it would be likely that we would probably have it here in this chamber if that, if that result comes true, because we may have, again, some public interest, and we want to be able to accommodate that in a room that's larger than the RTC building. So I will keep you posted with the blow-by-blow on that and make sure that you're aware, but it looks promising for, to get a respite in October in terms of an RPC meeting, and that shouldn't cause any issues for any of our items. There was a, potentially going to be a conversation about data centers at the, on October 1st, at the City of Reno, a joint meeting of the Planning Commission at the City of Reno and the City Council, that has been canceled and potentially will be rescheduled. I have been informed of something else going on at the Innovation Center, which is over there on Sinclair, that also is related to data centers. I'm going to show up and give 10 or 15 minutes worth of presentation of our research, but you can always check in on the level of our research and where we're at with learning more about data centers on our website. We have a, a data center webpage that you can find in, in the menu pretty easily, and it reports all of the information that we've gathered thus far, all the reporting we've done to this body, everything we've, we did our community conversation on August 20th, that was very well received and had a great participation. So we've been built, we have the survey as well, which is still active. We were looking to potentially close it in advance of October 1, but we're going to keep it open now because we've got a little more time. So encourage all of your friends to come take our easy three-question survey. Doesn't take very long, and then we can continue to gather that kind of sentiment around these data centers, which we know are very likely to be part of our regional future in terms of new industrial development, and they come with some potential impacts, especially around energy, as we've discussed, so. Wanted to tell you about that. Oh, I also, it came up in the, in the housekeeping item, but just to, to let you know that we are, we did go to the governing board. I may have already told you about this at the last one, but we've taken over the Trekkie Meadows Trails Initiative to a large degree, given the Trekkie Meadows Parks Foundation going, going dark. And we are maintaining the data. We've hired an intern that, named Jonah Headland, who had been an intern with us before, actually, and was working with the Parks Foundation as an AmeriCorps. So he's on board with us, working about two days a week, just cleaning up trails, cleaning up items, and, and working with staff from the locals in their parks departments to ensure we have the accurate trail data. So we've really kind of handled the, the trail data side, but we're working now to, to engage with what's called the Trekkie Meadows Trails Working Group, and it consists of the three jurisdictions, RTC, US Forest Service, like 27 different entities that are interested in trails. We're going, we're asking them for money, so that we can act as a fiscal agent to hire an independent contractor to, to take on the coordination function of this trails work, to make sure that there's someone there watching, linking it to development. Like, we're doing, we're doing our part with the NRCA tool, and in this interim moment, I am the regional trails coordinator, that's what I said. But I mean, we're working together to, to do that work and make sure that it goes on, but would be, it would really behoove us and, with our resources that we have, to have someone part-time dedicated to that, to ensure we have the best possible trails coordination we can. So we're working on it, and I will keep you posted. And then, of course, I have to announce that the RTC, TMRPA, Joint Reno Corporate Challenge Team is winning our division right now. Looks like we're going to get gold. As long as we field a team for the tug-of-war on Saturday, we win the division. So just wanted to bring that exciting thing to bear for this report. We'll keep you posted on the next meeting, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, one quick question. The data center item at the APA conference, did you say if that was on the Thursday or the Friday of the conference?
It is on the 23rd, which I believe is the Thursday at 1:30. I think, yes, you bet.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
If you end up getting a trophy from that, we would like to see it at the next meeting.
You got it. We have medals, well, maybe we'll roll the medals at the next meeting.
Nice. Do we have anything from legal?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. Nothing today.
Nothing? Okay. Moving on to item number eight, Request for Future Agenda Items. I have one. I would like to ask for a regional coordination subcommittee to look at the regional coordination policies. Anybody else have anything? Any public comment?
We have none.
All right, any written correspondence?
There's none.
All right, so we are adjourned. It is 7:10. Thank you.